I'd like to call the Slina City Planning Commission to order.
No, I don't think it was me. Our first item on the agenda tonight is approval of our summary minutes of the January 17th meeting and of the February meeting, February 7th also. So we have two minute approvals, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that approval of the summary minutes of the January 17th and the February 7th regular meetings.
Second. It's been moved and approved to, or moved and seconded to approve both minutes. All in favor, vote aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our first public hearing item is application Z-17-1, which is filed by DMA Architects on behalf of Salina Ortho Properties, requesting a change in zoning classification on property described as Lot 14 and Lot 16 in the replat of BB's second addition to the city of Salina. The physical address of this property is 523 South Santa Fe Avenue and 535 and South Fifth Street and 537 South Fifth Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an abbreviated report on this because we advertise this date as a public hearing date for this case. And I prepared the, both the notice for the Salina Journal and for the property owner notification incorrectly. And so you will see that the description there of the rezoning of property from R3 multifamily residential to C1 restricted business is not a correct description. The request is to take R3 zone property and C1 zone property and convert it all to the Hospital Medical Zoning District classification. And in preparing the notice and advertisement, I misinterpreted the application that was filed as only including the R3 portion, which is south of the clinic building. And so our recommendation after consulting with the DMA Architects on behalf of the applicant would be to re-advertise this for a March 21st public hearing. And this will necessitate us having a quorum for that meeting. But the request area should be farther to the north than what we indicated on our mapping and in our notification. And we mischaracterized the request as trying to make everything uniformly zoned C1. And the request is to make everything uniformly zoned HM Hospital Medical. It was our mistaken belief that the clinic wanted to leave the C1 zoning for the clinic intact. And that was an incorrect interpretation on our part. So we think the correct thing to do would be to hit restart and do a re-notification involving the entire request area.
So in that case, I would move that we move application Z-17-1 as amended by the March 21st meeting to that date, March 21st.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move application Z-17-1 as amended to the March 21st date. Any discussion? Not all the, I'm sorry. Mr. Baxa?
I have a concern about this, and I'm going to bring it up now. And somebody could say, well, it needs to just wait until it comes up. I'm a little concerned that there is a residence on the southwest corner of this area that will be the only R1 piece of property there. And I would much rather be looking at the possibility of rezoning that entire section as RM and having that residence become a non-conforming pre-existing property. It seems like it makes a nice square corner rather than having these little islands of residential area. And I don't know if that should be something that we could direct city staff to do.
In order to do that, you would have to amend the comprehensive plan. You would also need to amend the South Santa Fe Historic District. The reason that that is there and the reason that the Hospital Medical Land Use Area does not extend to that corner is that that house is the one remaining dwelling. It's a historically significant building, and it is one that is part, the only remaining part of the South Santa Fe Historic District, which at one time extended all the way up to South Street. So there are very specific agreements between Salina Regional Health Center, Salina Downtown, Inc., and the Salina Heritage Commission to leave that house alone. And so to do that would be undoing years of work that was done to put all this together. So that would be our primary resistance to doing that. Not to mention that the owner of that property would certainly resist that effort.
Well, in that same vein, north of that requested area is C1?
That is correct.
Isn't that a medical office?
That is part of the clinic's holdings. What we're trying to do here is to clean up and unify all of the holdings that Mr. Dr. Harbin assembled there and get them under one zoning classification. And so what occurred in 2004, when all the work was done to create the Hospital Medical Land Use District and the memorandum of understanding between the historical neighborhoods and the hospital, was that Dr. Harbin did not wish to be part of the Hospital Medical Zoning District because he didn't want his individual property to be associated with the hospital. But the Hospital Medical District is designed for medical offices. And so the request is to, that we will hear on the 21st, is to take, and I don't, are we close to having maps available? So what staff mischaracterized is that it was our belief that only this part of the clinic's, Harbin's holdings, was what was requested for rezoning. It is in fact, all of this C1 area here. So when this comes back on March 21st, the request area will extend all the way up to here. And so if their request is approved as they've submitted, this Hospital Medical area will extend down to everything except for that residence on the corner.
I'm going to continue to push, and you're more than welcome to push back, and I have every confidence you will.
I'm sure I will.
If that particular, if that particular house in that corner is historic and has historic value and is protected under all those things, could it not exist in perpetuity in a health medical zoning area as a non-conforming pre-existing piece of property?
And we will, we will bring up what we brought up the last meeting and at the steady session. If you take a residence, and it's a single-family owner-occupied residence, and you make it a non-conforming use, you have just made that extremely difficult
Very difficult for financing, I got that.
for either refinancing or for a new owner to purchase that and get a residential mortgage because then the lender is going to say, so if that is 55% damaged by fire, it can't be restored as a residence, correct? And we will say, yes, that is correct. And then they'll say, we don't want to make a loan on that property.
Can the property be used for commercial purposes?
No, it cannot. The Salina Regional Health Center signed an agreement that said that they, it was their intention to leave that property alone and to never make it part of the Hospital Medical area.
Could the owner of that property ask for zoning that would make it commercial? That's my question, actually.
They could ask, they could ask for that agreement to be abrogated, yes.
So there's the potential, the house could stand there, could be resold, and could be used as a commercial property.
There's a three-way agreement between Salina Regional Health Center, Salina Downtown Incorporated, and the South Santa Fe and Prescott Historic District property owners, where the Salina Regional Health Center said that they would not extend any of their facilities south of Prescott or acquire any property there, including this property. And in exchange for that, the Hospital Medical area was expanded to the east, all the way over to near Fourth Street. And based on that, Salina Regional Health Center acquired almost all of this property over here and up in here. And that was based on that agreement that they would acquire property there and not any property in a historic district.
Do you know, I want to be sure I understood one thing you said. That, you said this house is the only remaining house in the South Santa Fe Historic District? Is that correct?
If you go back before the expansion of the Salina Regional Health Center and to the time of the Sears Center, which was developed there and predated the Salina Regional Health Center, what they did with the Sears Center is they took out a number of single-family homes that looked just like the home that you see there, but they extended up the east and west sides of South Santa Fe. And so that house was the lone remnant of that. And it is the lone property in the South Santa Fe Historic District that extends north of Prescott.
Okay, so there are other houses in the South Santa Fe Historic District to the south of Prescott?
Yes, it starts there and goes all the way to Crawford, and then from Crawford down to Bond.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
And again, we, because we were recommending that this be carried over to the 21st, obviously, we will be armed with more maps and more background information at that hearing, but we were, we're not going to try to get into this case in depth at today's meeting.
Any other discussion? The motion is to move this application to the 21st of March. All those in favor, aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So this will come back to you in a re-packaged format, and we will provide you all the information on the comprehensive plan as it relates to this property.
Good. Public hearing item number 3.2, which is application M-17-2 filed by Compro Realty, requesting an amendment of the text of the narrative of the Neighborhood Center land use category of this Salina Comprehensive Plan to the list of potential zoning districts under the Neighborhood Center land use category.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is not the first time this has come up. And perhaps after our discussion today, maybe it can be the last time it comes up for the near future. But back when the comprehensive plan was being developed with the assistance of Gould Evans, city staff brought to their attention the fact that their potential zoning districts that they had listed and with the various land use categories and narratives were not very closely aligned with our current zoning ordinance or map. And so what we attempted to do is to get them to clean that up and modify it extensively before the plan was finalized for adoption. That did not occur in many of the cases. And so what we are faced with, which is a situation where if you read the description of what a neighborhood center is supposed to look like, and you look at what the uses are that are allowed there, it most closely aligns with our current C3 shopping center district. And so unfortunately, if you go to the narrative that is associated with the plan, the C3 district is not listed, nor is the C5 district. And so what we have is, your next item is an application to rezone a lot that's located in part of the Crawford, Ohio Neighborhood Center land use area. All the property around it is Zone C5. Although even though it's a Neighborhood Center, C5 is not listed as a potential zoning district under the C5 Neighborhood Center narrative. So as part of their application, this request has been filed, and the request is to add C3 shopping center and C5 service commercial as potential zoning districts. And so if we look at this area, what you see around the four quadrants of the interstate is all C5. And the only areas that you don't have are the Elmore Center and the Maury Clinic, which are somewhat more remote and far removed. And so here, we have a Neighborhood Center that's currently Zone C5, but we have a narrative in the comprehensive plan that at the bottom portion does not list C5 or C3 as a potential zoning district. So what we did was, we went through the various Neighborhood Centers that are on the comprehensive plan map. And at the one that is east of Iron and Ohio along East Iron is predominantly C3 and with a little bit of C2 zoning. And at Homes and Crawford, obviously, that's undeveloped, so it's still ag. At Marymount and Crawford, it's mostly C3 with a little of C2. At Crawford and Ohio, it's predominantly C5. At Cloud and Ohio, it's predominantly C3. Ninth and Cloud is C3 and C5. Markley Magnolia is currently ag. And then Schilling in Ohio. All four corners of that Neighborhood Center are Plan C5. So what you can see is that we have eight sub-areas identified as Neighborhood Centers, but the predominant zoning classification is C3 followed by C5 and Plan C5. However, none of those are listed in the actual plan document as potential zoning districts. So we had a great deal of discussion last year about Neighborhood Centers and their feasibility as a tool for use in Salina, Kansas, and for a variety of reasons, including the pace of development and the difficulty in go back and reshape established commercial areas. It just doesn't seem realistic that you're going to get all four quadrants of an intersection to be redone in accordance with a given theme. And so last year in June, you decided that the idea of an overlay district for our Neighborhood Centers didn't make a lot of sense. It made more sense just to focus on community-wide commercial development standards. Okay? So we have, once again, we're in a point where city staff is having to interpret and apply the future land use plan to a rezoning case. And we have encountered this before on South Ohio, and we encountered it at Schilling in Ohio. And so we have restaurants identified as a use that should be allowed or encouraged in a Neighborhood Center. But if you go to the districts that are listed, C1 is listed, and it does not allow restaurants, but C3 and C5 do. So the proposed text amendment would address that situation and bring the plan into better alignment with the city's existing zoning ordinance and zoning districts. So when we discussed this before, our recommendation was that C1 should be deleted and C3, PC3, C5, and PC5 should be substituted in its place. And so that is essentially the application that is before you, in this first item. And so one option you'd have would be to add C3, PC3, C5, and PC5 to the list of potential zoning districts and deleting C1 and correcting PUD to PDD, which is what our ordinance terminology is. You could recommend that C3 and PC3 be added, but not C5 and PC5. You could recommend maintaining the status quo and that no changes be made to the list of potential zoning districts. Or you could recommend that the future land use designation for this area not be a Neighborhood Center, but that it be commercial instead. You have in your packets there the summary of the category Neighborhood Center, page 2-13 of the plan. And at the bottom of that is the list where we have potential zoning districts. And staff's frustration is that we have a listing there of C1, C2, and R3, and almost geographically, none of the areas identified on the plan have C1, C2, or R3 zoning. And so we just think there's a misalignment between the description of a Neighborhood Center and the corresponding zoning districts that exist in our zoning map and within our zoning ordinance. So Dustin, I'm not sure which, have you gone through all three slides? Okay, so... The area that is shaded here, that is the Neighborhood Center that's been identified, associated with, and this being Ohio here and this being Crawford here. And then we have also provided you with a zoning map that you can see that that corresponding area is almost all zoned C5. So the disconnect here is that because, you know, we would look at a project like a CVS Pharmacy, and we would look at the description of the Neighborhood Center, and we would say, well, that's a project that's encouraged by the comprehensive plan. The good news for CVS Pharmacy is that that property was already zoned C5. So it was still consistent with the comprehensive plan. Even though it was Zone C5, they didn't need to change. But when somebody is trying to rezone a piece of property, and we're trying to analyze that in accordance with the comprehensive plan, then there's a mismatch there between the narrative of what a Neighborhood Center should consist of as far as uses and then what zoning districts are available as potential zoning districts. So at the bottom of page 2-13 there, we are simply suggesting that the C1 be removed and that C2 could remain, but that we add C3, Plan C3, C5, and Plan C5 to that because that is more reflective of the reality of the existing zoning in the community. So I don't know if we've made that too complicated or too simple, but we have, we have a, if you, if you look at the Dillon Store, which is part of the Cloud and Ohio Neighborhood Center, and you look in the description of the types of uses that would be allowed, beauty salons, banks, restaurants, gas stations, office uses, grocery stores, then you go to the C1 district or the C2 district, and neither of those districts would allow a Dillon Store. So what we think we have is just a misalignment between the narratives and what the actual zoning is of the areas that have been set aside on the plan. And again, the thought was that there will be a comprehensive plan adopted, and then the Salina zoning ordinance will be completely restructured to dovetail with these land use categories. And that second part did not occur. So we're doing the best we can to interpret and apply the comprehensive plan to a requested zoning change. And I think the other aspect that we had in discussions about Neighborhood Centers is we look at change or transformation. The other slide that Dustin had there showed that 90-some percent of this Neighborhood Center is already developed property. And even this, when this was done, was shown as vacant, but it's actually where Hillside Liquor is. So even that is not a vacant parcel anymore. So this is an area that is substantially already developed, and it's already zoned predominantly C5. And that's not, it's not prejudging the subsequent case that's to come on the rezoning. But we cannot tell you if somebody has a request for C3 or C5 zoning that it matches up completely with the Neighborhood Center land use primarily because of that list of potential zoning districts, not because of the use itself.
Are there questions for staff?
What is PC?
What's that?
What is PC3 and PC5?
PC3 and a PC5, and some, the reason we refer to those as limited, the primary difference between a C3 and a C5 and a PC3 and a PC5 is one of two things. One, in every planned district, the planning commission reviews the final site plan for what occurs there. So for example, where Lowe's is and where the Salina Square was recently developed or where Rib Crib was, that is a PC3 district. And there's two things that can happen in a PC3 district. The planning commission can recommend that certain uses that are allowed by right could be deleted or not allowed in that district. And then the other thing that a planned district does is that it requires that the planning commission review the site plan before development occurs. And so the planning commission approved the site plan for Lowe's. It reviewed the plan for Dymaru. It reviewed the plan for Rib Crib. It reviewed the plan for Salina Square because that is a PC3 district. At the corner of Schilling in Ohio, the C5 district allows car lots and allows used car lots and allows a number of other things. The planning commission decided that used car lot should not be allowed at that intersection. So the planned C5 districts for that Neighborhood Center deleted car lots as a permitted use. If you had straight C5 zoning, you could do a car lot. But a planned C5 district allows the planning commission to delete potentially incompatible uses. So the P means it's more of a customized district in relation to a plan. And the C5 or C3 just means it is a straight commercial district. And so there are no planned districts up on the screen here except for the West Star facility here was done as a planned development district because it had both an office building and an industrial component to it. But that's, that's the, and then this across the street was a dental office, and it became a planned C2 because there was a desire to have a nail salon, beauty salon in there. And that was done in accordance with a plan. So that is my best explanation. But our recommendation is that if, if you were going to include C3 and C5, that you also make reference to Plan C3 and Plan C5.
Other questions?
I think so. It seems like we spend a lot of time looking for these little anomalies with the comprehensive plan. And it's always difficult for me because we usually tend to find them when they're tied with someone who wants to do something that doesn't fit. And so, I'm not opposed to necessarily fixing this if it needs to be fixed, but I'm, I am getting a little frustrated that the only time we find these is when somebody comes and says, "I would like to develop this piece of property," and it doesn't fit. And so, you know, this is, this has been here since the comprehensive plan was in place, and it obviously was not a big problem until the next item that we're not talking about came up.
It has actually been a big problem, but it's been glossed over to a degree, and we decided that the most intellectually honest thing to do would be to not gloss it over. So, when you recommended approval of planned C5 zoning for the southeast corner of Shelling, Ohio, that area was designated as a neighborhood center. And what we could have or should have done this at that time, but we did not, and we didn't do it on, on South Ohio either. And so, rather than, I guess we could say, ignoring that it's there, we just decided, we just need to get this fixed.
And I appreciate the fact that you're handling it that way, that when the requests come up, that we try to clean it up. But I do also agree with what you're saying, that I had to unravel this to figure out who actually initiated it and why. I, at first, of course, thought it was the Planning Commission that was initiating this in order to clean up things, but as you look, it is because there's another request that hinges on it happening.
You actually did initiate this last January, but it got all tangled up with the discussion about housing and the Employment Center and the Liberty Edition, so we didn't address it then, and so...
I know, we did, and we studied it, and we got bogged down in it. And so, I see both sides here, but I guess the objective then is to continue to work actively to clean it up as we continue.
I guess one of the questions would be, and you as planning commissioners can advise us how we can continue to make this work. But this says that a neighborhood center is a smaller mixed-use node that consists of locally focused services, convenience goods such as specialty grocery stores, dry cleaning, beauty salon, bank, restaurants, gas stations, and small office uses that are provided within neighborhood centers. Neighborhood centers typically have thirty thousand to seventy thousand square feet of retail and complimentary office. So, as we look at those things that are mentioned in there, we have grocery store, dry cleaning, beauty salon, bank, restaurant, gas station, pharmacy, all those things mentioned, and none of those uses are allowed in C1 or C2. And the fact of the matter was, for, for better or worse, the one thing that the consultants who helped prepare this did not spend any time on was cross-matching the potential zoning districts with the uses that they described above. And so, we are attempting to clean that up on, on their behalf. And we're using the applicant to do it because otherwise, we would have to come to you and ask you to initiate it again, and it just made more sense to tie it in timing-wise with an actual request so that you could see, see the connection.
Excellent. It just took me a long time to figure that out. But, yeah, I did figure that out. It just, it also gave me sort of a feeling that I might be doing something that just prepared something for a particular person. And I guess that's... But I know we're not. I mean, I know that we're doing this in accordance with what we've all wanted to do, and that we have made this a priority. But did we expand?
And the reason we're focusing on the text is that we're not focusing on... This is not a map amendment. This is not adjusting the map or a boundary on the map to accommodate a project. This is trying to adjust the text so that the next one of these requests that might come up in a neighborhood center, we're not having the same discussion.
I guess the only other question I would have then is, are there other property owners or things in there that could have been involved in this particular process to simplify the whole area?
Well, I'll ask, I guess I'll ask you, as, and we've described that in our next report. My guess is that the average passerby on South Ohio, driving up South Ohio, probably already believes that the property that we're about to discuss in the next item is zoned C5. It looks like it's zoned C5. It looks like it's part of a C5 development, but it's not. And so, the reason that this is, is coming up is that within this, if you want to go back to the Neighborhood Center boundary, Dustin, there is only one single solitary, small property in this entire Crawford, Ohio Neighborhood Center that's not zoned C5, and it's the property that is the subject of our next application.
That was my question. If there were spot, other spot properties in there.
Yeah, there wasn't anybody else for us to bring into this because it is, it is just this one location.
So, given the fact that it's primarily a matter of adjusting text for the Planning Commission's use, is there a need to hear from the applicant, since we'll hear from the applicant on the following application?
Since we've listed Compro Realty as, as applicant and advocate for this, we, staff is just as much an advocate, but we are, staff cannot initiate an application, and a property owner can. So, we used that tool to bring this before you, but we would certainly want to hear from the applicant whether this, the addition of C3 and C5 makes sense to them, and in support of their own application.
Thank you, Mr. Norland. Any other questions for staff before we hear from the applicant?
So, there's no advantage to making this PC5?
That's not the subject of this application. You can bring that up when we get to item 3.3. The question here is whether, as you read and understand what a neighborhood center should be, and the fact that this intersection is a neighborhood center, whether it makes sense to you to list the zoning districts that correspond with the actual zoning on the map.
Excellent. Mr. Mazer, are you the applicant? No? Compro? Would you give your name and address, please?
Mike Wilson with Compro Realty, 157 South Seventh Street.
Thank you.
Mike, if you want to adjust the mic upwards, feel free to do that, yeah.
I've been known to break things, so I didn't want to touch it and break city property.
We've done more damage to deal every day.
Thoughts?
Yeah, this, as staff alluded to, this was brought to our attention for our application for the rezoning on the next issue. We're in full support. I think it makes sense.
Did you have questions? No? Does anyone have questions for Mr. Wilson? Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. And do we have anyone from the public? No? Then we'll close the public hearing. Discussion?
I would move that we approve application M17-2, amending the text in the narrative description for Neighborhood Center land use to eliminate C1 district and to include C3, PC3, C5, and PC5 limited, and that we change the reference to the PUD to PDD as noted by staff recommendations in the last page of this application.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Norland. Are you reading from suggestion number one?
I'm reading from staff comments, last of the page.
I don't have my glasses, sorry.
The question I think was, you did designate that you were deleting C1, is that correct? Okay, that's what I wanted to be sure I heard.
Right.
We don't have any C1 property in a neighborhood center today.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that the C1 be deleted, and that C3, PC3, C5, and PC5 limited be added to the potential zoning district section, and that the reference to PUD should be corrected to PDD. Any clarification on that? No? Not all those in favor, vote aye, please. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And that brings us to item number 3.3, which is application Z17-2, also filed by Compro Realty, requesting a change in zoning district classification from R2, which is multiple-family residential, to C5, known as service commercial, on property located at 720 South Ohio Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this property is best understood in context from its zoning history. And if we look at southwest corner of Crawford, Ohio, this area is referred to as the Riker Edition. It was, plat of this area was approved by the Planning Commission in 1954, and the original zoning was local business along Crawford Street and a second dwelling house district in the remainder of the subdivision. The only exception to that is there were six lots on the north side of Millwood Drive that were zoned for two-family dwellings to accommodate the construction of townhomes. After that was done, and I don't know if it was the request of the developer or the residents, the Planning, the Planning Commission came back, initiated the downzoning of a sixty-five-foot strip north of the residential lots to create a sixty-five-foot wide buffer strip between the commercial development and the residential lots on the north side of Millwood. In 1977, all the D-zone lots were converted to C5. The A-zone lots were converted to R1, and the B-zone lots were converted to R2 under the new arrangement in the 1977 zoning ordinance. And from what we can tell, on Millwood Drive, which is directly to the south, those homes were all constructed between 1960 and 1970. The commercial buildings on Crawford on the south side were built primarily in the 1960s. And as we look at the building that is addressed as 712 South Ohio, which is on this lot right here, it was originally constructed in 1962, and then, in addition to the south, was immediately added to that. And then, in 1979, the building was essentially doubled with a major addition to the west. And then, to the, to, back in this area here, that building was built also by Mr. Smalley in 1983. And then, what has occurred was the original Block 10 was one large 590 by 320-foot block. In 1970, it was replatted into five lots in the west half facing Lewis, and five lots in the east half facing Ohio. And there was a twenty-foot utility easement that ran through from Ohio to Lewis. In 1977, there was a petition filed to vacate that easement, and it was, in fact, vacated in March 28, 1977. In 1928, Mr. Smalley obtained a permit to construct a twenty-eight-foot by ninety-foot. It was described as a dwelling, but it appeared to be an office building. But then, it was determined that the property was zoned R1, was part of that buffer strip. So, work was stopped, and an application was filed to rezone the property to C1, restricted business. The neighboring property owners on Millwood were opposed to the rezoning, claiming that Mr. Smalley had already started construction of an office building before he applied to rezone the property, and also had been promised to them that a perpetual buffer strip would be maintained. And the Planning Commission voted unanimously to deny the application to change the zoning from R1. It went to the governing body. They returned it back to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission then voted to recommend approval of a lesser change to R2 zoning, and that was approved by the governing body, and the building was finished, and upon completion was, a CO was issued for a duplex. In 1990, there was a conditional use permit that had been approved by the Planning Commission for an insurance office and a portion of the duplex. That office did not last long. It was closed. And then, the Planning Commission modified the ordinance so that business and professional offices are no longer allowed in the R2 district. We are now in a situation where Compro Realty has secured a potential buyer who wishes to purchase Lot 8, and the, a portion of Lot 9, and then, the eastern portion of Lot 10 here, and wishes to incorporate all that into a redevelopment site. The redevelopment site, as proposed, would incorporate the full one hundred and seventy-two feet of frontage on Ohio, south of Subway. So, essentially, it's taking this, this, and this, and combining it into a single development site with one hundred and seventy-two feet of frontage. As we understand it, it does not include the property occupied by the L-shaped building. We informed Compro that Lot 8 and 9 are zoned C5, but the east eighty, one hundred and eighty-five feet of Lot 10 was zoned R2, and the zoning would need to be changed from R2 to C5 to create a commercial redevelopment site. So, this application has been filed on behalf of Rosehill Holdings, who owns all this property, and they're requesting that the zoning classification of this eastern portion of Lot 10 right here be changed to, from R2 to C5. If this is approved, it would allow the prospective purchaser to move forward with the purchase and with their plans for redeveloping the site. And so, we have discussed the purpose of the C5 district and how that purpose lines up with the description of the Neighborhood Center land use. But you can see in reading that description why the intersection of Crawford and Ohio is zoned C5 because it has many of the characteristics being designed for businesses and uses which draw their customers from motorist or arterial streets. And so, we have summarized what would occur if this request were approved. It would allow all permitted uses listed in C5, which include almost any commercial or retail use, offices, retail stores, restaurants, et cetera. The setback from Ohio being an arterial street would be seventy-five feet measured from the center line. In this case, since Ohio has a hundred feet of right-of-way, the setback is going to be the same. It's going to be twenty-five feet from the Ohio property line. Side yard setback is, of ten feet, is required where a property abuts, a residential property, and a, and a ten-foot is required at the rear if it abuts a residential property. If there's no residential property, there's no minimum setback. Our minimum lot dimensions, seventy-five feet of width, one hundred and seventy-two feet total is proposed. The average depth here is a hundred and fifty feet. You can cover up to fifty percent of a lot with building. The maximum structure height is fifty feet. Parking for retail uses is one space for every two hundred and fifty square feet of floor area, and one space for every three seats if you have a restaurant. Sign area is based... Sign area is based on the lineal footage of the building facing the street. I did want to call your attention to a couple things. One, our landscaping regulations require a 15-foot landscape buffer and some form of solid screening where commercial development abuts residential uses. And so this property here abuts residential uses to the south and so there would be a requirement to provide a 15-foot buffer strip at a, in a minimum on that area abutting there. And so essentially, the south 15 feet of this 65-foot width must be set aside as a buffer. The other thing I wanted to point out is Ms. Good brought up the distinction between a planned commercial and a straight commercial district. In our C5, C3, or other districts, we don't have any aesthetic requirements for buildings. We do have some general aesthetic standards relating to the planned commercial districts, but essentially, the, the main difference is that in a planned commercial district, the Planning Commission is given the authority to review and approve design materials and appearance of new buildings. And so as we look at the suitable, suitability of the site and the development, we on planning staff have referred to this as, as Smalley Plaza because Mr. Smalley built all those buildings. And if you drive by, it looks like a U-shaped development with three buildings, one in the back and, and two along the wings. The south building in sight, if you drive by, they're really not residential in appearance and to passerby, it looks like a single commercial development. What the proposal is here is to remove the north and south buildings and to redevelop the site. And in the minds of the applicant, this necessitates incorporating the current R2 zone portion into the site. And without that, this property would only have 107 feet of frontage on Ohio Street, which the applicant believes is, is too narrow to support a redevelopment project. By adding Lot 10, it would increase that frontage to 172 feet. And so their belief is the R2 zoning on this lot inhibits the redevelopment plan for this site and they believe it's more suitable for commercial redevelopment and would like to see the entire Smalley Plaza be zoned C5. So if you look at the rear property lines of the property on Millwood as, as the boundary between residential neighborhood and commercial, this is really kind of an isolated finger that, that sticks out from that. And so given its frontage on a heavily-traveled arterial street and its proximity to the intersection, this site is probably more suitable for commercial than continued residential use. As we look at the, whether the C5 zoning would be compatible with the zoning uses of nearby property, you've seen on the map that almost the entire Crawford, Ohio, commercial area is zoned C5. From this point south, Ohio is certainly solidly residential and this kind of forms the boundary line there. This is bounded by C5 on the north and west. We have the building across the street, which is Plan C2, but McDonald's is also zoned C5. And as we look at transitions or buffers, the area directly south of this is, is certainly solidly residential and we shouldn't intensify the use of this property without having some buffering in place. We did want to point out that because ostensibly that 28-by-90-foot-long building is residential, it's located only seven and a half feet from the south property line as a side yard. And so if this request is approved, any new building would have to be setback at least 10 feet and additionally, you have the landscape buffer would apply so the effective setback, the closest that a building could be would be at least 15 feet. And if there's any kind of drive or parking, then the building is going to be even farther away. So your role in this application is to establish where you think the commercial residential boundary should be on the west side of Ohio. And so even though this is actually zoned R2, it is commercial-looking in, in character and appearance. And so we don't think utilities are an issue. There are two water lines in Ohio, one's a distribution line and there's a parallel 6-inch line. Unfortunately, it's on the east side and it appears that the buildings that are already in place already have taps over to that so it might be beneficial to reuse that. There's 12-inch sewer in Ohio and that's certainly capable of supporting redevelopment. As we look at drainage, Riker Edition is a pre-1980 subdivision so there was no sort of stormwater detention required and this is not located in a critical drainage area or 100-year flood plain. So there's nothing that would trigger a stormwater detention requirement. There are inlets at Millwood in Ohio and there's a 48-inch storm sewer in Ohio, which is a very large diameter line. Staff was contacted by Jack and Rosemary Copeland and they live in this dwelling right here. And their comment to staff was that they didn't have any objection to the zoning change, but they just wanted to be, have some assurance that staff would look at site runoff and make sure that any development that occurred here did not create any drainage issues for them. They've got kind of a little swale right here and it appears that, and try to get the water to get out to Ohio Street and we think that's the best solution would be to make sure that as much water as possible from this site is graded to drain out to Ohio to get to the storm sewers and, and not to go south. The other wrinkle with this property is it has two existing curb cuts. One of those is, is north of the extended median on Ohio so it can only be used as a ride-in and ride-out movement. And then the south driveway can be accessed from the center turn lane on Ohio and it can be used for both directions. As we discussed in our study session, Broadway has about 16,000 cars a day near Crawford. This has over 24,000 vehicles per day south of Crawford on Ohio. And so any plans for redevelopment of this site is probably going to increase traffic volumes and turning movements over current levels. And so because of that median, there will have to be a close look at any type of spacing and location for curb cuts because of that median. And then, which brings us to the, the comprehensive plan, which we discussed previously and this is shown as being part of the Crawford, Ohio Neighborhood Center and it's not part of the suburban residential area to the south. So in staff's view, if you concur that C5 should be a potential zoning district, then there's no additional amendment to the plan map or any other changes that would be needed to support a change from R2 to C5 on this property. And so we've listed out some of the, the uses and, and attributes of a neighborhood center. And we did point out that this is 95% developed in this, this area already. So what we wanted to point out for you as it relates to redevelopment or to the Neighborhood Center idea is that the city does have existing standards that apply to the site layout, site landscaping, and does require landscape buffers in transition areas. What we do not have is we do not have building design standards or aesthetic standards for new buildings in our conventional zoning districts. So we have given you a summary of, of possible findings that you could accept or modify or reject. But one of our findings is that this property is more suitable for commercial development than residential redevelopment due to its shape and orientation towards Ohio Street and existing commercial development. Without the inclusion of this lot, the redevelopment site would be too narrow in terms of its frontage to be a viable site. We think that this property, driving by, is already commercial in character and appearance and it is adjacent to existing C5 zone property. So we think C5 would be compatible with the zoning and uses of property in the vicinity of that intersection. C5 wouldn't be incompatible as long as we have adequate buffers to protect the residential to the south. We have needed utilities and streets in place. And the south boundary of Lot 10 corresponds with the south boundary of the Neighborhood Center. So the rezoning is supported by the future land use plan map. And so we're not proposing to expand the Neighborhood Center or change the boundary between the Neighborhood Center and the residential area. And so on page nine, we've identified four alternatives. One, you could recommend the application be approved as submitted, which is a request for C5 zoning. You could direct the application be amended to a planned C5 district. And to do that, that would have to incorporate Lot 8 and east 150 feet of Lot 9 into the request area. And then that request would be reviewed in conjunction with a redevelopment plan. You could recommend that consideration of this request be postponed if you think additional information needs to be provided or you could recommend denial of this application, provided appropriate findings are made.
Thank you. I would like to draw our attention to page eight.
Okay.
I'm concerned. I'm not sure what happened here. I remember us doing this, but the development criteria that is listed out here, I think we all felt was very important. Now, I think then we decided that it needed to be done on a community-wide level, not just Neighborhood Center level. So if you read paragraph two, it says, "Planning tools for the line and focusing on community-wide development standards might make more sense." It then says, "The commission informed staff that it did not wish to initiate a Neighborhood Center overlay district text amendment," in which case, we then lost those seven bulleted items in a situation like this. If we rezone this property C5, we don't have any of those criteria or standards in place, correct?
I would not necessarily agree with that in its entirety. I guess part, part of it is-
Well, I understand the things that are already there in terms of site plans and such, but I'm sticking specifically to things such as the design of the ability, the aesthetic qualities of the ability, the things that aren't involved in site plan approval.
Okay, so the, what you have to do is look at the three corners that have been redeveloped at Crawford and Ohio. And you have the, the CVS Pharmacy, you have the McDonald's, and you have the Subway. All of those have been redone since the adoption of our landscape regulations, but those were all done and administrative plan review by staff.
Right. I know, I know, Ms. Dana, but what I'm saying is that I don't know what's going to be on this property. I know what a McDonald's looks like, I know what a CVS looks like, I know what a Subway looks like. But I don't know what this structure may be or what it may look like. And if we rezone C5, we have none of these development criteria or standards for a Neighborhood Center in place, correct? So they could put up whatever?
We have the tools that were used in the case of McDonald's, CVS Pharmacy, and Subway. If you don't feel that those tools are adequate, that is why staff put option two in there.
Yeah.
And if that, if that is an item of concern, if, if you do not believe that staff can adequately apply those tools through our administrative process, then-
I, I don't know what the tools are, first of all.
Our tools deal with, with site layout, landscaping, and buffering.
And it's not that I don't feel that staff can adequately do that, because I do. But I feel like it's our role as a planning commission to have some authority in that and I think it's what applies to development community-wide. So I think it's important that we consider that and that's why I'm drawing attention to the second option. Are there other questions for staff? None? Not yet? Okay. Then we'll hear from the applicant again. Mr. Wilson, would that be you? Your name, address?
Mike Wilson, Compro Realty, 157 South 7th Street.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Wanted to just thank staff for their, we feel, very comprehensive report. We think that it supports our rezoning application very well. And just open it to questioning.
Any questions for the applicant?
Can we ask what's going to go in there?
I can, I can tell you that it's a national food user, not unlike Subway, McDonald's. So we think that it fits very well and the aesthetic is not going to be unpleasing. Or unpleasant.
Can the aesthetic be changed? Or is it something that is set in some kind of model that exists everywhere?
That's not something I've got the answer to. I know they've got certain requirements for franchisees, but I think there are several options at the disposal, but, of the franchisee.
Other questions?
Does your client, does your client own all of the property, what would be just west of there? Not all the way clear to Lewis, but to that other boundary line? There's a, no, no.
Oh, and that's one of the questions that staff has.
Not that, the next piece, the piece that's left over that's outside of this.
All this over here?
No, just a small piece there.
The OCA building?
Is that a separate part, is that a separate parcel belonging to?
It could, I believe it's part of this parcel for Mr. Smalley, or the Smalley Building. I can't, unless Dustin can zoom that up or we can see the lines closer, I'd, I'd have to look at something that, that could allow me to see the parcel boundaries a little more clearly, but it is, I've pulled all the, the deeds on this property and it's a little bit of a jigsaw puzzle. But what I can explain is that this line right here is 150 feet deep. And you have Lot 8 and a part of Lot 9 here that 150 feet deep. This lot is deeper, but this particular piece, as it is owned, is, is 185 feet deep. So you have this parcel here. And our staff's primary concern, and it doesn't have to necessarily do with zoning, but has to do with layout, is the fact that, obviously, if we were doing this today, this parcel is not legal and it doesn't have any reason to exist separately because it's completely landlocked with no frontage on the street. And one of the questions we had is, we presume that some effort was made to acquire this, to incorporate that. And if not, is, is there going to be some agreement that will assure that there will be access to get back to this property from Ohio Street? Or is that property going to be cut off?
There's an access easement in place and there's every intention to continue that.
But is that agreement easement for a specified location that may not work with, with the new plan or is, is it?
Not, not presently, it was, it's my understanding that it will be-
It's a blanket access easement?
Correct.
Is it something that will be able to be serviced after redevelopment for something new? Won't there need to be parking and what, with all the other things we always have to have? And yet people will still be able to drive around? and yet people will still be able to drive right through it to another property?
Well, it is, that's why we don't allow landlocked parcels, because they are difficult to access. This, again, this was all Smalley Plaza, and essentially, Mr. Smalley sold this part off to Rose Hill Holdings and kept this, which made it a landlocked parcel. There is an easement that comes across here that allows Smalley's to, to drive across here. Our concern is if this is changed and it's redeveloped under that plan, will it still be possible for fire or emergency services or others to get back to that property physically?
Right.
And then for the future, obviously, if this is ever torn down, it has to be joined with this or with this, because we would never be able to issue a building permit for a building on a landlocked parcel.
So the answer is that you are not acquiring the L-shaped building in this project?
Or even the little strip of land that's in the gray, the brown-gray.
Is that the answer?
That's correct.
So-
You're just doing two buildings, the duplex and the chiropractic? Those are the only things you're gonna take out?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Jeff Mays, Compaire Realty, 157 South 7th. We've been in contact with the Smalley's who own the property just west, the L-shaped property. As Mr. Andrew alluded to, all three parcels were owned by them. Rose Hill Holdings purchased the Ohio frontage from them at, at one time. In that, there was discussion, and we've talked with the Smalley's about creating an easement. They're open to the idea that we may have to move that easement relative to the site plan. We have talked with them about marketing their property to the rear as well. The economics for where they're at and part, putting all three together and doing something larger just doesn't exist, not only in Sline on that quality corner, but in most markets around the state. So for right now, an easement will be created to create access for that back parcel, which I believe doesn't in fact make it a, a illegal parcel, given the fact that they will have right to access through easement. But we've been in contact with the Smalley's there, aware of everything that's going on. So it's just really the question of zoning.
Mr. Mays, where would that easement be?
It hasn't been defined yet, because we're waiting on site plan. We were in, we were in contact with them yesterday and today, hoping to get some site plan, maybe to give you all a sense of, of layout. Obviously, with the, with the given access points on, with the median restricting that north access, and we'll, our intention was to work with staff relative to that site plan to come, come to some reasonable conclusion. Our conversations with them have been that we would access the new development through the full service of that south entrance and potentially eliminate the north. That's how we've directed them to do, to look at doing their site planning. Now, it's in the hands of their engineers. We were hopeful to have it for you today, but we don't.
Can you point out where the south access is with a pointer?
That's right about where you are.
Yeah, you can see, yeah, about, well, the corner, excuse me, the corner of the, that, the north corner of the, on Ohio, the north corner of that lot is, or I mean, that blue line is about there. You can see it, there, there you go. But that gives, it makes sense, because it gives their customers full access turning, you know, both directions.
I see. Well, and it looks a lot bigger from the street side.
Right, right.
What about the buffer? What was the landscaping buffer situation?
Well, in our, in our judgment, it improves, it improves the environment for the neighbors, because it moves them from seven and a half feet to 15 feet of buffer. And we understand that that's part of the code, that's been, that, that information's been given to the engineers and being site planned.
And we'll review that when it comes back around. Other questions?
I mean, we, we feel like that, from a buffer perspective, and that concern of the 1980s, we're enhancing their buffer environment rather than, than not, because we're moving that, you know, and nothing will be, we're extending the buffer by, we're doubling it, essentially.
Do you have a drive-up window on this?
Yes.
I think this question's for Mr. Andrew, not being rude to you, but I don't think I have any more. My concern is not about rezoning this. My concern, once again, is we end up with a little chunk of property that is still R2.
Yeah, I don't-
Immediately west of this, and, and, and all that means is that sometime in the future-
I don't believe that's the case.
I'm sorry, that right, okay, right immediately to the left of the blue box, that is, oh, excuse me, it's R1. So you've got an R1 that's gonna be surrounded, not surrounded, on two sides with, with commercial property, and someday, this body's gonna get to come back and decide whether or not we're gonna rezone that.
Can you scroll that to the east or west at all, Dustin?
That's, right.
Okay. But we tried to explain in our, our background, and for whatever, I haven't figured out exactly what their motives were, the original boundary between the D local business zoning and the residential zoning was this line right here. And so what the planning commission, city commission did was they came back and they took a 65-foot swath through here, and they downzoned it from commercial to residential to try to mitigate the, the depth of the commercial development. Working against that was a provision that was adopted in 1977 that said if, if you had a parcel and at least three-fourths of it was zoned one district, it would infer that the remaining portion of that was subject to those same zoning rules, which more or less defeated that. So if you could go to the aerial photo. So if you can go over to Roach, and we'll just work our way across.
You gentlemen can sit down.
See?
You don't need to stand there.
I, I was here when the first McDonald's got built, and I remember when, when, when we went through this big hubbub about people on Millwood not wanting a fast food beside them. I, I, I understand this, but-
The 65-foot lots aren't usable as R1 lots. They just create a buffer.
They're just a buffer. So the, right here, this, people that own this accounting office right here are also the proud owners of a 65-foot strip right here that zoned R1, that they cannot use for a parking lot or for part of that building, because it's a buffer strip. And so it's, it's not that we're gonna be, what we're gonna be stuck with is a 65-foot buffer in here that's not going to be developable. Our, our concern is not this right here. Our concern is that we're still gonna have this building left behind.
Yeah.
And as I, I have a copy of the easement here, and the easement basically is for the path of the two existing driveways. So if, if there's any modification of this site that changes the, the path of those two driveways, then the access easement will have to be modified. But our, our concern primarily is that it will be our job or whoever's job in reviewing the actual site plan for this site to somehow ensure that there is continued access back to that landlocked building for public access and emergency access.
Besides that, it would have to be navigable. I mean, you would have to actually be able to do it.
Right, but the 65-foot buffer that, that we've just been reviewed on is, has been made obsolete there on, on the property that we're looking at rezoning today.
That is correct.
So what would lead you to think that somebody else at some time in the future couldn't come and say, "We're gonna get that 65-foot buffer made obsolete all the way along there toward, to Lewis?"
And that, that would depend on what the reaction would be from the people on Millwood if that was proposed for rezoning. The, in, in the case-
I was just wanting to try not have to do things multiple times.
Right. In, in the case here, we notified all the people who own property on the north side of Millwood, as well as the south side of Millwood. And of all those notifications, the only response back we got was from the Copelands, who said they're not concerned about the change to commercial zoning, they just wanna make sure that how the site develops doesn't create any drainage situation for them.
Which is illegal for us to be in there.
I can't explain to you how it happened. However, what, the reason for putting this aerial photo up is if, if Dustin can switch back and forth, if you look at this part where the drive-thru is and the parking stalls and all this stuff here for McDonald's, that is still zoned R1. And so it, it didn't create a separate parcel, it created a strip here that was essentially ignored, because the, the platted lot line goes back to here, and the, the south 65 feet of that was residentially zoned, and when the building official issued the permit for McDonald's, they simply ignored the fact that it was zoned R1.
And I'm, and I'm not, I'm not against changing the zoning, and I want everybody to understand that. I just would like for us to clean up this, those kinds of goofy little things that have occurred over the course of 25 or 30 years, so that it's finally right.
Well, they won't happen until they sell the property on the other side.
I would offer, I would offer two things for your consideration, commissioners. One, it was our understanding that these, cleaning these items up and dealing with staff needed to be triggered by an application. Because I, Commissioner Boxer, I appreciate your concern, and rather than having somebody stand here needing something from you, can we do it outside of that? But I think the governing, I mean, we're, we're considering things that were done in the 70s, rather than focusing on the comp plan that says what, what we're requesting is very consistent with what the comprehensive plan is, which is our governing document today, I believe.
And I would just like to find a way to make a motion that we include more than what we have outlined here, and I understand we can't.
Well, if, if, if you would like, and you, you can tell us what your, your pleasure is if you wanna go back to the zoning map again, Dustin. If, if this, so this part here is owned by the Smalley's, as is this part here, one of it's C5, part of it's R1. Is your concern that this parcel that's owned by the Smalley's is partially zoned R1 and partially zoned C5?
Part of that, and then it just extends.
And then the Rymo property here, would you rather see this buffer strip eliminated and turned into C5?
It might make that property along there more developable, and I'm not a developer, so I don't know.
And you don't live on the south side.
So what, what the, as we discussed in the study session, the, what the appropriate act, no matter what action you would take on Mr. Mays's application, under other matters or before we get to other matters, if the planning commission wishes to direct staff to initiate a map change on, on its behalf for this strip, we, we can do that as a follow-up action. But that is, it's not under the applicant's control to do that at, at this time, it is under your control.
I understand.
So if you wish to initiate that, we can certainly come, come back with that. But I did, I did want to, we're, we're back to page eight, and we, we think if we look at the scale and style of development being compatible with that surrounding neighborhood, to agree that the scale deals with the size of the parcel we have to work with and how it relates. We don't have anything in our standard zoning code that deals with amenities and public focal points and spaces, and that was one of the reasons we tried to, we steered away from the neighborhood center concept, because it seemed to have cost implications for the city and the, and the public to have to invest in, in public spaces. And then the streetscape and site design should be pedestrian-oriented, both among uses and between uses and neighborhoods. Without some adopted design standards, staff would agree that straight C5 zoning and the building permit review process doesn't address that. Space for multiple tenants and uses in non-residential buildings should be provided. That's not really applicable when you have a Subway restaurant or a CVS pharmacy, you're not dealing with a multi-tenant building. The, I would say that the, the two main points would be, quality design and materials should be used for all development to encourage long-term commitment to a location, and development should have a comprehensive urban design scheme. Those are items that not, if we don't have an overlay district and we don't have a planned commercial district, then there is no way through a straight C5 zoning and a building permit review that those items are gonna be addressed, because there is no minimum standard for that.
Commissioner Jackson, do you have a question for the applicant or for staff? Are there other questions for the applicant? If not, have we heard from public? No? Or is there anyone in the public that wants to speak?
The only public contact we had was from the Copelands, who live on the corner there, and were concerned about drainage.
Excellent, then it's open for discussion.
I'm taking off of your concern, and also Mr. Wilson's comment that the, the tenant has several designs perhaps that are alternatives. My guess is that that's because they go to communities where there are more strict design standards. And I'd like to suggest that we should take advantage of that opportunity to find that which seems to us most compatible with this.
And that is my fear about the C5 concept having dropped, apparently, the neighborhood center overlay concept with some of that criteria. I think we need a combination of that, especially in centers that we're considering to be neighborhood centers anyway. This is a neighborhood center, whether or not it has an overlay or not, it is.
Does the planned C5 accommodate that?
No.
I think it does.
It does.
Yes.
Yes, but I'm saying just C5 zoning.
Plan, I'm, I'm recommending item two then, for the planned C5.
Exactly, but I think that we need to, to watch that, and when there are options, we need to ask for them.
Yes.
Because there's an inferior model, there's a model that costs less, there's a model that looks better. I mean, I'm sure that there's, there's, you know, choices. And although I doubt that they'll put anything there that's not stunning, I'd like a little bit of ability to, you know, have some say in that. So Commissioner Jackson, I'm assuming that that means you're making a motion?
I think so. Yeah.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure everybody understands that under option one, the, that would be a recommendation to approve the request as submitted, which would be straight C5 zoning that would go on to the governing body, and if the governing body approved that, then we would wait for building permit plans to be submitted for the site.
And by the governing body, Mr. Andrew, you mean the city commission?
Correct.
Yeah.
So under option two, what that would require is to say, "We are not prepared to make a recommendation on the application. We would like to see it converted to a planned C5 application, and we would like to consider the request in conjunction with a proposed site plan for the site," which would include elevations of the building and the layout and all of that. As I understand it, we are not at a point where we can present any of that information today.
Yeah.
So if, if we did that, and just so we can look at, at calendars and things like that, then where we would be, it'd be very similar to our first application, where the scope of what we're looking at would go from just this part of Lot 10, it would also include Lot 8 and the east 150 feet of Lot 9. That would become the request area, and then we would have a site development plan for that. But in order to do that, we need to ask the applicant when they think it might be feasible to have a plan for the site that could be reviewed.
And bill, and elevations.
And elevations.
Couldn't, we just change the zoning, and then-
And then when they do have the plans and site plan available, we could approve that at a different time?
That would be number two. Otherwise, we'd just go to City Commission.
If you just simply change the zoning, then I will try to, as I said, when CVS Pharmacy was done, that property was already zoned C5, and they submitted a building permit application, and we worked with them to develop their plan, their layout, their landscaping, their driveways, all that through an administrative process. But we had no design criteria for the building, or there's no ability for staff to say, "We don't, we think you've given us Plan C and we'd like Plan A." That authority does lie with you if you have a planned commercial district. So, the appropriate action would be to ask that the application be converted to a planned commercial district to be accompanied by a site development plan and building elevations. And then what becomes relevant is to confer with the applicant as to when their prospective redeveloper might be able to submit those things so that we can coordinate those two items.
Mr. Mays, would you approach? Do you have an answer?
I'm sensitive to the fact that everyone stands in front of me and talks about timing. If at all possible, I think we could make it a priority for the buyer to bring forward these components for your consideration next Planning Commission meeting.
Well, what we would do, or we would attempt, and that's why timing becomes sensitive. So, if we're going to do a planned C5 district, we're going to want to make, if we look at this map, we're going to take not just this, but we're going to take this whole thing and make it a planned C5 district subject to a site plan and all. So we would expand that area. We would send out notices, but then we would want to have, at the time we sent notices, a copy of the plan and the thing, so whoever received notice could get a view of. So if the Copelins came in and said, "We're doing a planned district so that there's a site plan and building elevations," and the Copeland said, "I want to see the site plan," planning staff needs to have the site plan available to show them. So in our last case, in order to do all the notice and expand the area in that, we would do it for the March 21st meeting. The question is, how soon, between now and then, could we get a site development plan and elevations?
We have got, we would have no issue with a PC5 because it sounds like that's where, and we're comfortable with the buyer's capability to meet the requirements. If we could request to work with staff through that in that we can keep this application moving forward, we've got an unusual scenario in this deal structure in that the seller has some pressures to keep this process moving forward. So if this gets kicked out a month, it's dead. Not by the buyer, which is what generally, Commissioner Story knows, is what, how that generally blows up. If we, I mean, we have no issue with a PC5 zoning, work with, if it were, if it was already zoned PC, we would be walking in and dealing with them. If you would vote to vote and move it on to the commission, that keeps us on calendar with the contract extensions that we're currently under.
When would we be reviewing it then?
I'm sorry?
When would we be reviewing it?
And when I mentioned the next Planning Commission meeting, I was curious of the date because I think we could turn that around to you all. Now, the question is, do you want to do it, or would we be working with staff, which is what we would generally do under a planned event?
I think our point was that we wanted to be involved.
Okay. And that's why I'm asking, what's that date? And as it relates to the City Commission action?
The way that this is calendared now, if you were to act on just a request for C5 zoning, then it would go to the governing body on the 13th of March, the City Commission. And then they would consider it on first reading then. So, the primary concern is that essentially, if you, if you, the only other thing that you could do is to restructure this so your recommendation is for Plan C5, not C5, and with a deferred review of the site plan. But when you've done that, you've already said that you're recommending the zoning. And we certainly, we had that in 2001. The Planning Commission recommended Plan C3 zoning for the Lowe's site, and the review of the site plan for Salina Square didn't occur till 15 years later. So that, you're putting the parameters in place. Our primary concern is that today our authority only extends to Lot 10. And so, are you looking at a, when you make something binding through a planned commercial district, you have a legal description that that plan applies to, and your plan is going to cover Lot 8 to east 150 feet of Lot 9 into the request area. And so, the only thing I can, and I, when you say timing and moving along, you're referring to a closing and then not wanting to close without the commercial zoning being in place?
Correct. And it didn't seem, in a previous conversation, we discussed the idea that the entire lot, I mean, because I asked the question is if we kept 100% of the restaurant use in the C5 and parked the R2, and you said that wasn't an option because it all had to conform with that, it all had to, wouldn't, would that still, would that comment still apply if we had a planned C5 down there, then the entire thing become Plan C5?
Well, if you had a building and the building fit entirely within the C5 area, the question is, could you build parking or parking lot in R2? The answer to that is no, but...
Right. My question is, does that then in turn, if the commission acted to call the south half of it PC5, does that, does that logic work the other way?
What the Planning Commission would be reviewing would be the parking lot because they wouldn't be reviewing the building.
So let me throw out something as a possibility here because we're looking, everybody's talking Plan C5, and I don't know that anybody has a real desire for Plan C5, other than it gives this body an opportunity to take a look at what it is that you're hoping to put there. And it sounds like the applicant is more than willing to do that, they just don't have it.
We don't have an objection to doing that.
So if we took a look at number three, which would be a postponement to, our next meeting is March 7th, we would have, our, my hope would be is that we would have something to look at in terms of what this thing might look like. And then we could vote on whether or not we wanted to make it a C5 or not, and we wouldn't need the planned on there anymore. And it wouldn't require a refiling of the application and all the other things.
I thought we had to amend the application to do that and give notice to people.
Well, if you look at number, our choice is just to, we need more information prior to making a decision, and I think that's what everybody's worried about here is that we don't see that.
I think we run into another notice period after your action and before the City Commission is the hang-up there.
Well, the prime, that is all well and good. What we're trying to, what happens with a planned commercial district is that either the ordinance that rezones the property makes reference to that, or it makes reference to a final plan being approved by the Planning Commission. But when, we have had planned commercial districts where the site plan is part and parcel with the zoning district, and so they're considered at the same time. And then in the ordinance, it says that development of the property shall correspond with the Planning Commission and building elevations approved by the Planning Commission and City Commission. If you had this as a straight C5 and were adding it to the other C5, the site plan would assist you with your decision, but you cannot put any conditions on a straight C5 zoning.
So Ms. Mays, I have a question, I think might be Jermaine, and maybe you've answered it, maybe you haven't, but I guess I can only guess, but if you have a food franchise, perhaps a national client who is interested in developing that property, is time really that much of the essence? If we have a commission, and this is my sense, you have a commission who seems not opposed to that idea, simply wants to have some input and some guarantee about what that final plan will look like, do you think that will scare them off?
As I indicated earlier, Commissioner, we've got an unusual environment here in that the times of the essence is not so much on the buyer's side, although they are ready to, I mean, they're working towards going. It's on the seller's side for some of their estate planning and transactions. And we went through a great amount of back and forth and negotiation over extending for the zoning. And if that gets kicked down the road, it's going to mess up their estate planning piece. So it's an unusual environment, and I get that everybody's got their, you hear it every day when somebody's in front of you, I'm sensitive to that as I indicated earlier. But it's on the seller's side that we're having the timing issues. Mr. Andrew, what if I, would there be a way to allow the commission to vote to approve PC5? They're not, they're not willing, and we're willing to accept a PC5 vote today. And the review of the site plan, but with the condition that the review of the site plan and elevations is tied to the building permit for that lot, which would prohibit us from, I mean, it would make the site unusable if we lost that 65 feet. Would that be a way to keep? Our motivation at this point is to keep on the agenda for the City Commission in moving forward. From what I'm hearing from you all, nobody's against going C5. What I'm trying to get to is a way we can keep our dates with the commission. Is there a way, if the motion was made to approve PC5, and we would have to satisfy that March 7th date, I think I heard, with those elevations and site plan? Or if we don't meet that, then the City Commission would know that prior to their consideration? Is there a way, or am I getting outside the lines too far?
Well, they can, they can, they can make a motion to recommend that this be converted or be approved as a Plan C5 with a deferred submittal of a site plan. But again, the only ordinance that's going to be created here is only going to cover Lot 10, and then we would have to be confident that the, if that site plan is not approved, that failing to do so on Lot 10 is basically going to be, not allow the project to move forward.
If that weren't the case, we would need to be in front of you. If we could do it just on C5, we could move forward without any authorization. And we can't do that.
Let me throw this out. If it's, if we change the zoning to C5 and the City Commission agrees, then administratively the site plan and elevations will be approved. Rather than have it administratively approved, could we ask that this body make those approvals?
But it would have to be done as a condition. What I just outlined there is kind of a hybrid between options one and option two. Under option one there, you're saying that you would recommend approval, but not for C5, but for Plan C5 with a deferred review of the site plan. But when the ordinance gets before the City Commission, it's only going to address Lot 10. And so, it's basically going to say that whatever occurs on Lot 10 has to be consistent with the plans reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission and City Commission. And so what everybody has to understand is that if we wouldn't be here if there was a belief that this plan could be accommodated on the already zoned C5 area. But if it could, then you're not going to get to review it. It's going to be an administrative matter.
That's what I say. Why does it have to be administrative matter? Why couldn't it be this body's matter?
Because you cannot, under Kansas law, you cannot put conditions of approval on a rezoning. You can put conditions of approval if you have a planned district or a planned development district. So the only way that you can have a condition that allows you to review the site plan and elevations is if you take option one and you say, "The Planning Commission recommends approval, but for Plan C5 zoning with site plan and elevations to be reviewed on March 7th."
By the Planning Commission.
By the Planning Commission. And then that would keep everything on track, and by the time that it got to the governing body, the City Commission, on the 13th of March, they would know what your decision was as regards to the site plan and elevations.
In the staff report, as they consider your recommendation, it would come that on March 7th, Planning Commission either approved or denied the application for the site plan.
Are there other questions for Mr. Mays?
This may be, so in the scenario that we would hear this March 7th, is there sufficient time to get a plan made out to mail and any objections registered?
Well, again, we're, we've already had the notice of this public hearing, and any action you take here, the, any neighboring owners are, so what we're doing under this option is we're not expanding the notification area.
I see.
We're focusing solely on the zoning and what happens with the east 185 feet of Lot 10, because that's the only thing within your purview.
Which makes that more feasible by March 7th.
Right, so the only thing you're, would make a recommendation on today is whether Lot 10 should be C5, or whether it should be Plan C5, subject to your review and approval of a site plan and elevation drawings at your March 7th meeting. That is the only way.
Is Lot 10 the only parcel being sold? Or is there additional property?
It's the only, it's the only parcel that's subject to the application because the rest of it's already appropriated.
But it's not the only parcel in this transaction.
No, no.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Mays?
Thank you.
No, thank you. I, you know, Mr. Mays, the thing is, is I totally understand closings, obviously. I do them every day. But I also feel like there's a bigger picture here, and this is something that we have worked on quite a bit to establish. And I feel like some of the mistakes that I look back and think we may have made in the last year or so were good examples here in the fact that we didn't have any oversight after we made the decision. But that's my opinion.
So just for, if our, again, as Mr. Mays explained and we explained, if this project would fit entirely on Lot 8 and the east 150 feet of Lot 9, we would not be here this afternoon because the zoning's in place, and it would have been done just like Subway and CVS Pharmacy and McDonald's. McDonald's did come to you because there was a plat involved. So, again, the distinction between a C5 and a Plan C5 is that a Plan C5 has a site plan and building elevations that are considered in conjunction with... and building elevations that are considered in conjunction with the rezoning request. What you would be doing is saying, because we don't have a site plan and elevations at today's meeting, you're willing to defer that review to your March 7 meeting. But if your recommendation is that the zoning classification of this lot should be changed from residential, then the only way that can occur is if you say it should be changed to a planned C5 instead of a C5. And then that is the only means by which you can have any authority to review those things, because otherwise, it's just going to be an administrative staff review. And the alternative is to bring Lot 8 and Lot 9 into it, but that would require a re-notification, expanded notification area, and additional time to do that. So, the only way to do this, where you stay within the timeline that has this going before the city commission on the 13th of March, is to say that you want this to be a Plan C5, but you're willing to defer your review of the site plan and elevations to your March 7 meeting.
So, Mr. Andrew, if I understand you correctly, we could vote to approve for PC5 zoning today, but conditional upon site evaluation on the March 7 meeting? Or are you saying we would defer both the zoning change and the site plan to March 7?
I think you would give a favorable recommendation on the zoning change today, but that you would, subject to review of site plan and building elevations, to occur at your March 7 meeting. And if they did not meet your satisfaction, then we would not take the zoning forward to the governing body, because they hadn't fulfilled that condition.
And Lot 8 and 9? What happens to those?
You would have, they're zone C5 today, they would be zone C5 in the future, and you would have to have the confidence that the site plan is not viable unless it includes 8, 9, and 10.
But the whole site plan, the whole site plan would affect C5 as well. We're talking about the PC5 section of that, but interestingly enough, they can't go ahead with the project, no matter how the C5 remains C5, but we're talking about the inseparable part of the building that would be in the PC5.
So, if this was only on Lot 8 and 9, one, we wouldn't be here, and two, you would not be reviewing the building elevations and site plan, city staff would.
So, we have a motion on the board, do we need to amend it?
We haven't made a motion yet.
I don't think there's been a motion there yet.
Well, I do, I recommend that we take the option that Dean just stated. That was, I think that's our general agreement. I think that would do it.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion, I'm sorry.
The motion is to recommend PC5 zoning in lieu of C5 zoning with, subject to review and approval of a site plan and building elevations at your March 7 meeting.
Correct.
If that's for Crystal's benefit, if that's.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded.
So, that, motion by Jackson, second by, good.
Good.
Recommend approval of PC5 zoning, subject to, in lieu of the C5, subject to review and approval of a site plan and building elevations at your March 7 meeting.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Does Commissioner Jackson want to make a motion for the rest of that 65 feet?
I don't know what that motion would be.
Well, I could come up with one.
Oh, you can come up with one. My concern is that, obviously, the people that live on the south side would see a reduction in their property value. It might enhance the north side, but I wouldn't want to lose a buffer zone behind my house. I think we'd need to really address that and look at that closely.
Who maintains that 65 feet now? But, yeah.
The property owner, I assume.
I don't want to, so let's not discuss it. You have, you have businesses that are going to have to move things if that were to be revisited and reaffirmed, and it should be there also. That could be the other side of that. So, no, I don't want to.
Any other business?
Do you want to, as I understand it, the chairman is not going to be here for the March 7 meeting?
I will be agon at a conference for my franchise.
I am dying for the opportunity.
So, we will have access to the packet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, if we include said site plan and building elevations, we want to make sure that they do, in fact, reach you.
They will.
And this may, this is sort of an other, are we in other?
We are in other matters, yes.
Your comment dovetails with something that I've been wanting to ask this body for a little time. What is the practice, policy, ordinance, whatever, regarding a non attending board member participating in the meeting via phone or some other electronic device, and then being able to cast a vote?
I believe there is some precedent for that in Kansas, but it is something that we would have to run by and get approval of our legal counsel for. It's not, it's not been unheard of, whether, with the various technologies that are available.
Next week or whatever, but I have, I have observed that phenomenon in some other elective bodies, and I was just very curious whether, whether statutorily, this body would be able to have an absent board member, listen, be a part of the discussion, and then vote on something. I'm just very curious.
If it's through a conference call, and it's truly interactive, so everyone is seeing the same things, then I believe it is, it is legally permissible, making it work technologically so that it meets all the legal guidelines would be a challenge.
Yeah, that's never been done before.
I wasn't really wanting to put you totally on the spot.
I think, I think the governing body has done that in, in not the public sessions, but in, in steady sessions and closed sessions, where they, they have had somebody remotely tuned in via a conference call setup, so everybody's hearing the same things and everybody's seeing the same. That's the only thing that really matters, is whether the people that are making the decision are all hearing the same things and seeing the same things.
Well, and so that everybody's real clear on my position on that, is that I think that as a person on a body that makes decisions, you ought to be able to sit right here, or you should sit right here, look the proverbial person in the eye, and have your say, as opposed to sitting at home in an easy chair, having your say. That's my opinion about it, but I was just curious about the statutory authority to do that. I would find it kind of distasteful if, if someone were not willing to look at their audience and tell them why they voted the way they did.
I think you could, you, there's a potential to get into some legal weeds, and I think Dean's wording is appropriate and on target, that the commissioner remotely connected would be able to both hear and see what's going on. Because somebody, even if you were hearing it, could say, well, they didn't see the display, the argument could be made, I've got the packet in front of me, you know, but you get into some potential legal matters if somebody didn't like a decision, and that was, you know, admittedly, that's pretty far fetched, but still.
You could watch it on access TV, though.
Right.
There you go.
If you're watching on access, you're not participating.
If you had a phone.
Skype would be the solution.
But you may not see the whole thing as you would see it here either, so.
So, before you escape, Mr. Story, it is with, I know Mr. Linkowitz is not going to be here the 21st of March, and Mr. Freiberger's not going to be here the 7th of March. Do you anticipate any travel plans or anything that would keep you away from the 7th or 21st? Does anybody here have conflicts on either the 7th or the 21st that would keep you, keep us from having a quorum on those dates? And I'm already seeing that we'll probably have some carryover to the 21st, but on our March 7 agenda, we have temporary signs coming back, and we have completed all of that review. But as Mr. Hirsch can attest, it's fairly complex, and there's also a bunch of options that we're giving you. You actually have a lot of policy options for you to work through, and there've been some discussion that we should give you the overview and, and all on the 7th, and then maybe allow you to percolate on it and not vote till the 21st, but that will be your judgment, because it's, it's a lot to take in, and we've had multiple meetings, some of which our heads have hurt afterwards.
Will that be a public hearing then on the 21st?
It is a public hearing on the 7th. That's what was, it was postponed to, and if you continue it, then you'd be continuing the public hearing to the 21st. But that would be all the universe of temporary signs, also including feather flags and all of that, but it's yard signs, election signs, garage sale signs, real estate signs, all those types of things, except we can't call them those things. So, you'll, you'll see how, how that, that logic works. The first meeting in March.
Is that song, sign, signs, everywhere there are signs, is that public domain at this time?
Yes, it is.
We need to play that during.
Mr. Boxer, yes it is. I would say, as one commissioner, as one commissioner, that seems reasonable to me to postpone.
He really did, he really did.
And I think we'll probably continue this to the next meeting as well. The first meeting in March is our annual review of the comprehensive plan. We will go through that, and since chairman's not here, we probably want to continue that, some not take any direction on that, and continue that to the 21st. We have Magnolia Hills Estates, number 2, coming back. That is, was the subject of a moratorium, that was the subject of a reworking of, of our subdivision regulations relating to perimeter streets, and there was some question about development agreement or plat and zoning going first, because we already had everything designed, the governing body would like to have a, know that the layout that's going to be the subject of a development agreement has been reviewed by the planning commission before they get into it. So, that will be on your agenda for the 7th. And then we have just added a deferred site plan and building elevations for this project to that. So, and then on the 21st, we have the rescheduling or restart on the Harbin Clinic property that was discussed earlier, and then we have a request, we have, was done as a, started out as an I-2, turned into a planned development district, I-2, what's the RV storage buildings out on the abandoned rail right of way on Schilling Road. And their approach is, they started with I-2, and they would like to finish with I-2, so they're going to try to persuade you that the planned development district is not needed anymore, and that they need some flexibility on their use of that property.
This is March 7 also, Dean?
That's 21st.
Oh, that's 21st. Harbin and the planned development.
21st would be the Harbin Clinic, and what I'm referring to is the RV storage on, on West Schilling Road. But it is possible that you may want to take the temporary signs and hear our report and consider your options and not, not make any immediate recommendations. So, we're just stating that it's, it's very important for us that we know we can have a quorum on the 7th and 21st, because we've got some heavy items coming forward, including...
Dean, just, I'm just thinking about the potential length of the March 7 meeting. So, this is a question, is it possible to get just a brief overview of the major changes in the signs, ordinance, since we would be coming back and revisiting that on the 21st? Does that sound feasible, or is, are we really in need of a complete review, top to bottom?
Well, we, we have a draft, but then, what, which, I guess I view it as a, as a à la carte menu, that we're, we're basically saying, every residential property, every commercial property gets X number of signs. But then the question is going to come to you, do I get additional signs that I can put out during the election season? Do I get additional signs I can put out if I'm having a garage sale or an open house, or my house is on the market? And if so, what's the total number of signs that's acceptable on a residential or commercial property?
So, then another question, so it sounds like it'd need to be fairly thorough, and with that in mind, is it possible to delay the comprehensive review in full until the 21st?
Well, we've already made a motion to postpone it until the 7th, and so...
Well, put it, it has to be on your agenda. I'm not saying that you have to give us any direction or action items on the 7th. I'm just saying that it will be, because we always do it the first meeting in March, but we want the chairman to have an opportunity to be there and weigh in. It's, it's where you, you look through it, and we say, here's what we've done, here's what we haven't done. Which of these do you want to move forward? Which one of these is important to you? Is it Broadway? Is it, is it these other things? So...
Yeah, Commissioner Boxer makes a good point.
So, we'll probably end up discussing it on both the 7th and the 21st. So, it'll be temporary signs, comprehensive plan, Magnolia Hills Estates, number 2, and deferred site plan and building elevations for 720 South Ohio. And then the 21st is going to be the Harbin Clinic, Foxborough property, and anything that you carry over from your meeting on the 7th.
Magnolia Hills is just first phase, or first phase of the second addition, right?
It is the entire subdivision. It's a preliminary plat, and they have an application, it's zoned agriculture today, it's, they have an application to rezone it to residential, and they have a preliminary plat, and neither of those have ever been acted on by the planning commission.
So, then, are they going to address Holmes Road?
You are going to address Holmes Road by following the language in the amendment to the subdivision regulations, and so they'll either be required to pave it to city standards or to get a development agreement with the governing body.
Any other items? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much, as always. You do a splendid job.